Members, I understand we have at least one member who is having technical difficulties. The staff's trying to work with them to resolve. Thank you for those of you all who were on time. I really appreciate it. Okay, Representative O'Leary was the one having technical difficulty. So, um, thank you to the staff for making sure everyone got the technical assistance they needed. I have not heard from anyone else that they're having difficulty joining. Um, so the time is five oh five. Um, on Monday, March fourth, and this special meeting of the DC State Board of Education will come to order. And the role will now be called to determine the presence of a quorum. Uh, Director Butler, please call the role.
Representative Kelly. Representative Vial floor. Representative Washington.
Present.
Representative Yarkin. Representative Williams.
Present.
Representative Chang. Representative Goulet.
Here.
Representative O'Leary.
Here.
Representative Henderson.
Present.
Representative Best.
Present.
Representative Thompson.
Present.
Representative Reed.
Present.
Vice President Patterson.
Present.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. A quorum has been determined and the State Board will now proceed with the business portion of this meeting. Uh, members, uh, we have a draft agenda before us typically. I would ask for corrections or additions. Um, but I'm just going to entertain a motion to approve because we cannot add or edit a special meeting agenda. Um, so, um, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda before us.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved. And second, it looks like, um, we have one member who is still having technical difficulties. Um, all in favor, um, please say yai.
Yay.
Yay.
Hey, uh, anyone opposed? Please say nay. All right, uh, it sounds like the motion is approved. Uh, good evening. Uh, my name's Ebony Rose Thompson. I'm the word seven representative, uh, to the DC State Board of Education and I serve as the president of the board on behalf of the DC State Board of Education, um, and its members. I want to welcome everyone in the viewing public, uh, to, uh, our first ever special meeting. Uh, at our February twenty first public meeting, members voted in favor of postponing a vote on SR twenty four dash five, approving the categories and format of the DC school report card. This will allow members time to address any outstanding concerns and properly review the resolution. While also not, uh, not waiting until the following public meeting, uh, to do our best, uh, to respect uh, the time and resources that the Office of the State Superintendent, uh, have put into updating the website. Uh, at this meeting, and the State Board will vote on proposed categories and formats for the DC school report card, aiming to present more holistic information about each school's strengths and programmatic offerings. This vote deals on the equity focused updates to the accountability framework approved in July twenty twenty two and demonstrates the board's commitment to responding to community advocacy around ways to make the DC report card a more effective, informative, and hopefully parent-friendly, uh, resource. Um, at this time, uh, we will consider, or we shall consider SR twenty four dash five approving the categories and format of the DC school report card. Uh, is there a motion to consider?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Vice President, um, Patterson and seconded by Representative O'Leary. Um, I'm going to invite, um, Director Butler, uh, to do her favorite thing, which is read the resolution into the record, uh, before calling for discussion. I see you reading, but I can't hear you because it is on mute.
Let's try this again. State Board of Education Resolution approving the categories and format of the District of Columbia School Report Card, SR twenty four dash five, whereas the Ever Student Succeeds Act. Excuse me. Twenty USC sixty three eleven ESA requires state education agency, SEAs, to prepare and disseminate an annual state report card that meets minimum data requirement and is concise, presented in an understandable and uniform format that is developed in consultation with parents and widely accessible to the public on the SEA website. Whereas the Office of the State Superintendent of Education is fulfilling its obligation as an SEA under ESA annually publishes the state report card on its website. Whereas pursuant to DC Code thirty eight dash twenty six fifty two eight twelve, the DC State Board of Education shall approve the categories and format of the state report card. Whereas OSI and SBOE consulted relevant comments received during engagement done in twenty twenty one around the update to the district ESA plan and the STAR framework, which provided meaningful insights on the priorities of DC families. Whereas in twenty twenty two, the State Board passed SR twenty two dash five to establish a two-year schedule for the amendment process to the Ever Student Succeeds Act, which requested OSI establish a consistent process and partnership with the State Board to discuss possible amendments to the accountability framework at least every two years in the spirit of OSI's commitment to equity, rigor, and transparency. Whereas OSI and SBOE conducted joint public engagement on updating the categories and format of the state report card throughout the fall and winter of twenty twenty three, resulting in approximately seventeen hundred pieces of feedback. Whereas the public expressed appreciation of the data that is, that was collected, including on the state report card website. Whereas the foremost requested additional categories of data by the public were one, school climate satisfaction survey data, two, teacher retention data, three, class size and student-teacher ratio of staff data, and four, additional program and course offering data. Whereas the public expressed a desire for the state board, excuse me, for the state report card website to be easy to navigate, easy to understand, and would follow, would allow for school comparisons, excuse me. Whereas OSI proposed the following categories for inclusion on the state report card. A, all category previously approved on February twenty first, twenty eighteen, under SR eighteen dash three. B, district-wide school climate survey from students, school-based staff, and caregivers after implementation in the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. Teacher retention data, student-to-teacher ratio, and student-to-staff ratios for bus school program offerings, extracurricular and enrichment activities, and of course avail, and course availability data. And whereas OSI proposed, the format of the state report card will be computer, tablet, and mobile friendly, be printable, be available in multiple language, languages, Amharic, Chinese, English, French, Korean, Spanish, and Vietnamese, be navigable with minimal scrolling, display data and use language in a manner that is intelligible to the broader community, permit users to search for and compare schools, display the accountability score so that it is easily understandable, easily accessible, contextualized against district norms, and contextualized for its constituent parts. And now therefore be resolved that SBOE approves the categories and format of the state report card proposed by OSI. Be it further resolved that OSI will include the updated categories on the state report card as the district-wide data are available, reliable, and comparable. Be it further resolved that OSI will obtain stakeholder feedback for implementing school-level badges on school profile pages that promote equity and district priorities. Be it further resolved that OSI will conduct further inquiry to identify and incorporate additional special education data into future state report cards. Be it finally resolved that SBOE recommends OSI. A, include information on the availability of safe passage programming on school profiles, extend reporting on post-secondary pathways outside of enrollment, include a placeholder for financial data prior to May update, report the percentage of students at each assessment level currently one through five on each school profile, add information on how current data displayed on the state report card is. Display additional student group data for day, for students who are not economically disadvantaged, not English learners, or do not have a disability, and continue to conduct user testing to assess accessibility and usability for all users.
All right, I want to invite discussion on the resolution. Thank you, Director Butler, for reading the resolution into the member, into the record members', uh, discussion. All right, I see Representative Goulet.
Thank you, President Thompson. Uh, just wanted to start off the comments by thanking you for your leadership and giving us another a week and a half here to look at this and to work with OSI to make improvements. Also want to thank our SBOE staff. Uh, they've done a phenomenal job working on this and thanks to the superintendent and her team as well. They were great partners in this. We were able to do extensive public outreach, which I think was very successful. And, uh, the staff stayed overtime to work those events. And I think it really resulted in what's a really good product today. Uh, for the public, uh, this is going to be an up or down vote tonight. Uh, we don't have the ability to amend the resolution, so you know, myself included, no one probably here got a hundred percent of the language they wanted in the final resolution. But I will say that this is light years better than what we had before, uh, which was the old star system where you, first thing you'd see would be stars on there. And we really have, through a lot of hard work of our staff and leadership of this board, uh, created something that I think is really going to give parents a lot more information in a clear fashion. Uh, I was able to speak to over two hundred parents and students, uh, from all eleven of my Ward Three uh, public schools during sidewalk officer hours in the fall. And, uh, we had nine data points and issues that they told me over and over again. And four of those are included, uh, in the list that OSI had. Uh, first thing in order, uh, number one was course offerings and curriculum, uh, particularly advanced placement courses, foreign language and specials. Uh, number two was class size, student-teacher ratios. Three was the availability of pre-K, uh, three and pre-K four classes. Uh, fourth was extracurricular activities. Uh, fifth, uh, the availability of before and after care, and we still need to do a little work on that language. Uh, six, uh, was special education services. Seven, uh, school nurse availability. Uh, eight was school climate and, which included the teacher retention and parent satisfaction uh, issues that our executive director mentioned. Uh, number nine, and lastly was the student discipline and safety. So I'm really thrilled that OSI worked very closely, uh, with us and with me to ensure that all of these issues uh, that we heard from Ward Three parents are included in the school report card dashboard. And I'm looking forward to working with, uh, the board members, OSI, and all the advocates who did such great work on this to make sure that as the, uh, final version of the website is produced, that it's conveniently searchable, that it has a wealth of information on it. Uh, because the residents want to be able to compare, uh, issues that are important for them and making the best choices uh, for their children, uh, when they look at schools across the district. So just want to thank you again, President Thompson, for your leadership. I'm excited to support this today and look forward to voting yes. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Representative Goulet. I, um, get the bonus of being in the room today, which helps me keep everybody in order. Representative O'Leary, I forgot how this worked previously.
Thank you very much. I, uh, uh, know that everyone isn't, didn't get everything they voted for, as Representative Goulet mentioned, uh, but this product is so much better than anything we've seen since I've been on the board. And, um, I, I know that it's still a work in progress because we haven't seen what it looks like. And I can't wait to work with OSI and with the board on making sure that what it looks like when it comes out in November, uh, will resemble what we've been talking about all along. And the most, one of the most important parts of this resolution is the fact that it's, we have, uh, a chance to change the way it looks every two years. And so, uh, we, we haven't stopped. And we will, we will continue to make sure that what is represented to our constituents is something that's user-friendly and also reflects what each school looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative O'Leary. Uh, I have Representative Pa, excuse me, Vice President Patterson next in my queue.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I want to thank everybody as, um, some of my colleagues have done already. The hard work that has gone into this. Um, I know every individual that is on screen that we can see has put in an enormous amount of time in talking to their constituents, being out in their wards. I don't think there's a person that's up here who didn't put forth their best effort to make sure that we provided what our constituents told us to do, um, in regards to this, uh, report card. Um, as the at-large member, I have the opportunity of just going throughout the whole city and talking to um, a number of people, not just a particular ward. And I had the opportunity since we delayed to speak with, um, an individual who is on here, this, um, that I've seen and that is an attendee, uh, CEO of Friendship, uh, Pat Brantley. We discussed this in, um, in length, and I just wanted to get her opinion. I consider her a person that I look up to and that, um, kind of I, as a mentor, so to speak. Um, and we discussed this and she sent me, um, an email. And I sent it to the rest of the colleagues, but I did want for the viewing public to hear some of what was part of that particular email, um, two paragraphs that's in it. It states, "No one knows better than black parents the impact of prolonged systemic racism and disinvestment to our children. We want to know whether our children are reading and doing math on grade level. We want to know which schools are doing best to overcome structural, prolonged racism and disinvestment to help our children grow. We want to know which schools have art, music, and advanced programs in addition to core subjects. While we know deeply that test, test-based assessments of schools aren't enough to assess school quality, we reject the idea that parents, and particularly black parents, aren't able to interpret school scores, and thus it is better to keep those scores out of the public view. Our families should have all available data on our schools, and this information should be easily and readily available. The score exists. Knowing how our schools are doing compared to others gives the information that we can use to advocate for our investments and resources our children and schools need." I agree wholeheartedly with, um, Friendship CEO, Pat Brantley. Um, in talking to parents, I talked to a number of other parents, um, Sheila Carr, who, um, who has, um, decoding dyslexia. Her granddaughter tends to same school that my child does. I wanted to make sure that we know here that parents do want information. They want to be able to compare it. They want to be able to look at schools. It's not just about the accountability, but just to make sure that we're getting the resources. I have said since day one, I've never meant this report card to be an indictment on any school that is under-resourced and undermanned. But I did want it to be an indicator to what schools need. Um, again, I want to thank everyone who has put so much time and effort into this, and I look forward to voting yes tonight.
Thank you, Vice President Patterson. Uh, Representative Henderson.
Thank you. Um, I think that there's a lot of great information that is on the existing report card and on the report card that would result from the resolution that is before us. The parents can, can see, um, how students are doing on, um, on tests. They can see proficiency. They can see growth. Uh, they can see course offerings. Uh, they can see, um, before and after school information. Uh, there's a lot of great, uh, information. It also includes, uh, a summative score, an accountability score, which I continue to believe based on my research, um, the expert testimony that we had before the board, uh, conversations, uh, that I've had, uh, with parents, with, um, with school leaders, uh, you know, who, who don't all agree about this, um, just as we don't all agree about this. Uh, I think that score continues to be, uh, opaque and misleading and harmful. Um, it feeds into two different accountability systems or mechanisms. One is the ESA framework, which uh, is used to identify the bottom five percent, and those bottom five percent of schools do indeed, um, as was intended, get extra resources. Uh, for the other ninety-five percent, uh, I believe that the accountability mechanism uh, works in the opposite way, uh, where the, the schools that score higher are going to tend to get, um, more enrollment, uh, which in our system drives, uh, resources. Um, and, um, to the point that, you know, the score exists and then we need to share it. Uh, if, if we do share it, I believe we need to be as transparent as we can be with that. Um, I do not think that it's too much, um, to present. Um, if we're going to present that score, to present parents also with information about what that score is and what it isn't. Uh, and that's why I've asked a couple times, uh, in my feedback to OSI that we would also include um, a statement that it is, it is not a measure just of school quality. It's a measure of certain categories that are approved uh, by the federal government. Uh, and also that there's error in this, in the scores, and I would love to see us calculate the error in the scores. Uh, because I think, you know, if parents are going to be making consequential decisions, not just um, for the school communities, but also for them and for their students, um, they should, should be able to know, you know, what differences in scores are really significant and what differences in scores can just be statistically, um, the same. Uh, in other words, if, if one school has a seventy and another has a sixty, are those truly perceptibly different? Um, I think parents deserve, uh, that information too. Um, I think we have made some improvements in, in the formula. Uh, it was, it's been pointed out that, um, the correlation between, uh, the twenty twenty-three scores and poverty uh, is, is down, uh, for elementary and middle schools. Uh, it's still very high, highly correlated for high schools. Um, and it's, it's less, but it's still high. Uh, and so I think it's important that as we're holding schools accountable, that we're holding them accountable for things that they actually can control uh, and not things that are outside of the school. So, um, I'm sorry that has not been super eloquent, uh, but, um, I am, am very conflicted about, um, you know, that part of this. Uh, as others have pointed out, there, there's no way tonight to vote against that score. Uh, OSI has said that if we do not approve, uh, this resolution, then we will revert back to the, the previous, uh, the, to, to the twenty twenty-three version, uh, which does include the score, um, and without much context. Um, but I don't feel that I can give my vote of approval, uh, to, to the score as, as it's proposed. Um, I don't think the board should. I don't think OSI should. Um, some, some people might say, you know, this is progress. It's not perfection. Uh, I feel like perpetuating the harm of the summative score is not just imperfection, but is also antithetical to progress. Um, so I'm going to vote no. Um, I do hope that as we continue the conversation into the next iteration, um, that, that we can, uh, continue to grapple with, uh, the implications of uh, the score, um, making it more transparent if we're going to share it, um, and, um, understanding our, our dual systems of accountability that are at play here. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Henderson. Representative Best?
Uh, thank you, everyone. Um, I think we have, I think we've come a long way and spent, uh, a considerable amount of time on this issue. Uh, and while there are some issues that I wish were addressed, such as uh, time in classes like arts, science, social studies, things of that nature, I, I, I will vote yes. Not because I think that this is exactly what like, uh, I want or, uh, what we all want, but uh, because I don't want to go back to what we had, and I do believe that this is miles and miles and miles better than, uh, the STAR system that we had before. Uh, in fact, in my work, I, I get an opportunity to talk about, uh, topics like this with leaders of school boards and with, uh, state board reps across the country. And, you know, we, we are, we are miles ahead of a lot of places, um, eh, with this that we're working on right now. Uh, but I do urge the board, uh, and OSI to consider adding some of these things as we move forward, uh, in our next go-round, uh, when we, uh, vote on this again, uh, in two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Best. Representative Williams.
Thank you, um, President Thompson. Uh, thank you colleagues, um, OSI and the public um, for the engagement around this issue. Um, I, I, I think a lot has been said around a variety of arguments and, um, I, I feel like we've lost sight of what this tool is supposed to do and how it's supposed to be used. and how it's supposed to be used. I, I was reminded in a NASB conference that this is just a starting point and that we then, as elected officials, need to continue to connect dots for the council, the mayor's office, and ultimately for residents around the city of how we are going to ensure that resources get to schools to be able to improve school communities. And I don't feel that we have fully figured that out as a city. And it's something that I, I think we need to continue to do better. To the point around transparency, I also am very clear as the S A law states that this summative score does not represent school quality. And to the argument that this report card is much better than, and we've come a long way, there are things that I'm really heartened by with regards to school climate being included and with regards to some safe passage data and ultimately with regard to educated turnover. As I fully believe as a teacher myself, that we need to make sure that we continue to keep our most effective educators in the district classrooms. However, many states, more than half, do not report the, the summative measure because it is misleading. And, and I think that we, no one is, I think it's a disingenuous straw man argument to say that we are trying to hide the score when we are, when all special interest groups and public interest groups and O C and the state board members support showing academic data. And we are reporting academic data. We're reporting, we're reporting test scores. But one thing that would like to push us and push O C to in the future is envisioning a more equitable system where we can collect things that we have not yet collected before, where we can collect the minutes to a holistic education, where we can collect, you know, other pieces of information like restorative justice coordinators and school mental health providers and other things that are really making a difference for students. So I plan to vote no tonight on this, on this issue because I think that even though there are some things in this document that will create more information for parents, it ultimately does more harm than good when we exacerbate school segregation in our city and make lower-performing schools on test scores feel inadequate for the incredible work that they're doing every day to serve our district students. And I hope we can have a more robust and broader conversation on this when we revisit it in, in the upcoming session.
Any further discussion? All right, I will add to the discussion. I do my best to work for my values. And I think two of my values are at play here. One is progress, and the other one is equity. I am committed to leaving things better than I found them for people who need systems to be better, like people who look like me, people who come from where I come from, people who have faced a lot of the same challenges I have faced, and people who want to have the same opportunities that I have had. And I not only want to, it, it's not to say that I want to limit them to my opportunities, but I want to create more opportunities. That's really important to me. I both appreciate the work that has been done, and I want to be able to build on that work and expect that more work will continue to be done. I do believe that we have gotten better and that we can continue to get better. I am not just encouraged, but I think it was actually very important that we added things like school climate, that we added things like teacher retention. I think we did way more than just a slogan, I guess, of going beyond the stars. We not only removed the stars, we improved the formula, and we are giving more information. I don't know if the goal should ever be perfection because I think perfection at any point in time can change. But I do think, just as we were asked to go beyond the stars, you do shoot for the stars, and then you, like, continue to work to the moon. And I by no means expect this vote to be the last for vote on the, vote on the report card ever. I remember when we voted on the framework and I pushed not just O C, but I pushed us, and some of us were not board members yet, but I pushed us as a board to come back to the table to make sure we could reintroduce. I want to make sure that whether people vote yes or whether they vote no, that the same commitment remains to continuing to do work. Because that is the only way that systems get better for our students. So I'm going to close discussion, and the motion is to adopt S R twenty-four dash five. And Director Butler will call the roll.
Representative Washington?
Aye.
Representative Williams?
No.
Representative Goulet?
Aye.
Representative Henderson?
No.
Representative Best?
Aye.
Representative Reed?
No.
Representative O'Leary?
Aye.
Vice President Patterson?
Aye.
President Thompson?
Aye.
S R twenty-four dash five has passed with a vote five for three against. Motion has passed.
All right, I want to thank not just all the members for their time and engagement tonight, but I want to thank again all the members for their time and engagement up until this point. I also very much want to thank our staff and the O C staff, who has done engagement alongside us. And I want to thank every single member of the public who is engaged in anyway, whether you have called, sent a text, sent an email, showed up in our chambers, whatever you have done to get your point across. I appreciate it because time is the one thing you don't get back. So thank you for everyone who has dedicated their time and attention to this. As a reminder to the viewing public, the state board's regularly monthly meetings will continue. This is uninterrupted in March, meaning like we will go back to our regularly scheduled programming. We have our next working session coming pretty quickly this Wednesday, March sixth. And our next public meeting will be held Wednesday, March twentieth. With no further business before the state board, I would now entertain a motion to adjourn. Unless we want to stay here.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it has been properly moved and seconded and a little bit of thirded. All those in favor of adjourning in the meeting?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, as have it, and this special meeting of the D C State Board of Education is adjourned at five forty P M. Thank you all.